January the 27th, 2015 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bobby James, District Three.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District Five.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District One.
Absent.
Mrs. Carol Ely, District Two.
Present.
Mrs. Angie Boynton, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. George Tomlin, Superintendent.
Here.
Just for the board members and members in the audience, Mrs. Stacy's absence is due to a medical injury, so just make sure you know that. Ms. Deb Jenkins, Director of Career and Technical Education, please introduce the students who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce two Southeastern Youth Fair ambassadors. We have Justin McClure, who will give the inspiration tonight, and Derek Sharp, who will lead us in the pledge.
If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Champions aren't just made in the show ring, they're just recognized there. If you would like to know where a true champion is made, just look at their daily routine. Good evening. My name is Justin McClure, and I am the President of the Bellevue High School FFA Chapter. I've been showing at the Southeastern Youth Fair for the past five years. Every exhibitor at the Southeastern Youth Fair strives to become a champion. It is the drive from within to succeed is what makes them a champion. Feeding their pig, walking their steer, and watering their plants is all a part of that daily routine to make them a champion. The Southeastern Youth Fair means so many things to so many different people. Responsibility is a value that is taught to each and every exhibitor of the Southeastern Youth Fair. When you have to care for an animal that you have your life and money invested in, you learn to be responsible. Another value is hard work, for without labor neither knowledge nor wisdom can accomplish much. This excerpt from the FFA opening ceremonies applies to each exhibitor of the Southeastern Youth Fair. Whether it is hot, cold, or raining, animals still need to be cared for. Bags of feed need to be unloaded, animals need to be groomed, and pens need to be cleaned. At the fair, there is one champion that gets recognized with that big banner, but all the hard work and dedication and responsibility put into their project shows the true champion in each character. Thank you.
I want to take just a minute and share a little bit about these two gentlemen. Derek is a sixteen-year-old junior at North Marion High School, and he's been showing at the Southeastern Youth Fair for five years as well. He's involved in both 4H and FFA. He's currently President of his 4H club, he's President of the Junior Cattlemen's Association, and has held officer positions at the county and district level for 4H. He will be exhibiting a steer, heifer, and lamb, and last year Derek won the overall exhibitor at the Southeastern Youth Fair Lamb Show. Justin told you earlier, he's a senior at Bellevue High School and currently President of his FFA chapter. He is also running for a state FFA office this year, and he has already served as the FFA district, sub-district, and district co-chair. He's been showing five years, he'll be showing a steer and a heifer, and he has already joined the swine committee at the fair as a volunteer and will continue to be involved with them after he graduates, so he can help students gain the same experience from the youth fair as he has. I think it's important to know that the Southeastern Youth Fair is the oldest youth fair in the country that operates without a midway, and it's the largest youth fair event in the state, and it's run by over two hundred volunteers. This year, they're celebrating seventy-five years. So, we're extending a special invitation to each of you to come out and see the students and enjoy the fair. It is free of charge, of course, open to the public, and the gentlemen have a schedule for you. It starts on Friday, the twentieth of February, with the rodeo, high school rodeo, and then it ends the following weekend on the twenty-eighth. And if you have any questions about the fair or about projects, I'm sure these two young men would be happy to answer any questions.
I know as former principal, we started a 4H club, and I would hope that this would come down into the elementary schools, because our children need to learn about 4H and the youth fair and what raising animals is all about. So, I thank you for your leadership and keep it going. I hope to go to the youth fair with my grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you for asking for your leadership, and thank you for bringing this to us tonight. We appreciate that. Any more comments, board?
Just for a minute. I know what it takes to really get your animals to the point where they get to the fair, but I also know how important being in the FFA is. Would you tell us about some of the things that you are involved with, like parliamentary procedure and speech and all of those things that you go? Just give us through a typical, your journey as you move through.
Okay, well, about two years ago, I started on the parliamentary procedure team and extemporaneous speaking team, where we compete at the sub-district level and then move on to districts and then go to the state level. And for the past two years, I have gotten second place at the sub-district level in both parliamentary procedure and extemporaneous speaking. And as you had said earlier about going to the younger elementary school kids, our chapter does a program where we go every other Friday to Bellevue Santos Elementary, and we do little lessons with them about agriculture and teach them about animals, so that they have kind of like a knowing for when they come up in the middle school on what they're going to expect when they take an ag class, so they don't just think that chocolate milk comes from chocolate cows.
Tell us about the amount of effort it takes to get your steer to the show.
Well, it's actually, I got my steer last May, so I've been feeding him from all the way then until now, and it's a very costly process, and it's not only a lot of money that you have to put into it, it's a lot of hard work and effort to get him broke to walk and load on a trailer clip and everything so that he can be ready for the fair.
And the sad part, when you sell it?
It's not really sad, because it's sad once he leaves, but once the check comes in, then it gets a little better.
For the past five years, I've been exhibiting steers, heifers, lambs, hogs, and goats at the fair, so I've been doing a lot. And so, I have to do the same thing as far as selection, feeding, walking, training, watering, getting out there every day with all of those animals. So, I understand it, I understand how much money and time and effort it takes. I think it teaches children and students a lot of responsibility and financial things that they wouldn't necessarily know until they're out of high school. The past three years, we've, me and my siblings have gotten loans from Community Bank, which has helped us pay for our projects. So, that's not only helped us pay for our projects, but it's helped us understand the financial part of agriculture and showing at the youth fair.
Thank you. Thank you.
Board members, I recommend approval of the agenda for the January 27th, 2015 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting. The audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
Board, may I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So, move.
I have a motion by Ms. Ely.
Second.
Second by Mrs. King. Is there any discussion? May I have a vote, ma'am? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes for zero. Mrs. Judy Zanetti, Public Education Foundation Officer, would like to recognize a special donation.
Good evening again, board members. Nice to see you again today, Mr. Tomlin and Ms. Boynton. It was good to see you this morning at the Public Education Foundation Board meeting. Thank you for being there. I'm going to sneak in a little presentation before we get to the reason that I'm here this evening, and I'll pass these around with Ms. Flocketter. And this is to invite you all to the next Engage in Education quarterly meeting, February 12th, at MTI. We've got a fantastic guest speaker coming, Jeff Scroggins from the Whitestone Group, and he's going to share with us some information on career technical education and workforce development, and then, as you'll see on the flyer, some really fantastic breakout sessions. We even have folks coming down from DOE to help with some of those. So, I would encourage you to be there, and anyone in the audience, and I know lots of familiar faces here that have been very engaged with Engage in Education, there are some flyers on the front table. We would love to see you all, February 12th at MTI. Of course, it's free to come. We would just like you to bring a friend. Okay, now, I'm here this evening for something very special, and I've got two friends to help me. I've got Mrs. Anna Dunwoodie and Mrs. Barbara Phytos from the Community Foundation of Ocala Marion County. And as you know, Mr. Dunwoodie was very influential here in Marion County during his lifetime, particularly during his time as Superintendent of Marion County Public Schools, and he was Superintendent during a very difficult time when we went through desegregation. And recently, again, as you know, we have now a lovely building named after him, after R. Mac Dunwoodie, and those funds were collected and held at the Community Foundation, and the funds not used to purchase the sign were then donated to the Public Education Foundation with $7,425 that we are using to continue to fund the Mac Dunwoodie Teacher-to-Be Scholarship. For those that aren't familiar with the Teacher-to-Be Scholarship, that is something that is open to Marion County Public School employees that are seeking to become a certified classroom teacher. So, paraprofessional, secretaries, anyone that is not a teacher, that holds or associates' degree, and is working to become a classroom teacher is eligible to apply for that scholarship. And we are excited to be able to grow our own and keep them here in Marion County. And now, I'd like you to hear from Barbara Phytos from the Community Foundation.
Thank you, Mrs. Zanetti, and good evening to everybody. We were delighted, absolutely delighted, when Mr. Jim Copeland and Mrs. Anna Dunwoodie came to the Community Foundation through our Fund Development Officer, Beth McCall, to inquire how the Community Foundation could be of assistance to them in securing the funds necessary to put the signage at MTI in honor of Mac Dunwoodie. And the vision and the vision of this school board in solidifying that naming policy so that we could make this happen is just very much appreciated, and we thank you for that. But, being able to facilitate setting up a pass-through fund to raise those dollars through the Community Foundation only lends credibility to your policy, because it is a recognized entity, it enables potential donors to make tax-exempt contributions to that fund, and we were able in turn to facilitate getting some additional grant dollars over to the Public Ed Foundation in honor of Mac's scholarship, the Teacher-to-Be Scholarship there. I have some information that I'll share with Mr. Tomlin about the Community Foundation, the various funds that we hold, and I also have brochures for each of you that describe the work and the efforts of the Community Foundation. But, it was a delightful opportunity for us to do that. And Mrs. Dunwoodie had sent out any number of letters requesting the donations to come through the Community Foundation in honor of Mac, and we received probably well over fifty donations from not only people in this community but far and wide, people that knew Mac that no longer live in Ocala Marion County. It was just an extraordinarily wonderful response, and we were just delighted to be able to work with Mrs. Dunwoodie and with Mr. Copeland to accomplish that. You've all seen the signage at MTI, and the goal was to raise, obviously, sufficient dollars to cover the cost of that signage, but that very specifically, any additional monies raised would go to Mac's Teacher-to-Be Scholarship. So, the giving keeps coming, and it's not only facilitating the signing and the recognition that was so well deserved for Mac, but the ability to fund a scholarship ongoing for our students in Marion County, it's just a blessing to be able to be a part of that, and we thank you all so very much for the opportunity. Thank you. Well, I just want to thank everyone that helped Mr. Dunwoodie's legacy live on here in Marion County, both through the naming of the educational complex and through all of the teachers that will be here teaching in Marion County with help from the Mac Dunwoodie Teacher-to-Be Scholarship Program. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Just a moment, please.
Mr. Dunwoodie's spirit will definitely live on here in Marion County for a long time, and I'm so excited that that's finally happening, and think of all the teachers that are going to be impacted by this, but thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. James.
Mr. Dunwoodie, I know Mac, wherever he is, he's having a good time. And I just want you to know, being from around here, and I guess I have the elder statesmanship on the board here, I did have the opportunity to really meet and work with Mac Dunwoodie. And it's always a pleasure, just when I pass down that road, down by Forest High, the old Forest High School, and see his name there, because that's part of history. And whether people like it or not, when they see that sign, they say, "Mac Dunwoodie, Educational Complex," they will say, "Well, who was that guy?" And maybe that will start the conversation of what he was really about, and the good deeds and the things that he did for the students and the community. So, it's one of these things where, hey, Mac Dunwoodie really left our legacy for us here in Marion County. Thank you.
Hopefully, he'll continue to leave a legacy of the scholarship. Absolutely will.
One other thing.
Yes, sir.
Just for the record now, we are working on Brent Hall, and if we could get you all involved with the Brent Hall group out at Bellevue, because that's another great individual that did some deep, neat things for the county, and it's out at Strike Zone in Bellevue Stadium. So, I'll try and pass them on to you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, so much for presenting, and thank you, Anna.
Thank you, everybody. Just so you don't, you'll miss me at your next board meeting, but I'm going to be sending Lauren Diorio here in my stead. I'll be with some Take Stock students in Tallahassee.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Zanetti. Danellin High School Principal Ken Maiketeer would like to share a special recognition received by a senior at his school. Mr. Maiketeer?
Thank you. Good evening. Let's pull this up a little bit. This is Alana Osborne, and Alana is a senior at Danellin High School, and I'm very excited to tell you a little bit about what Alana's been up to for the last six months to a year, and then I'm going to let her share a little bit more specifically about what she's been doing. Every year for over the past seventy years, the American Legion, and we actually have some American Legion Auxiliary members out in the audience, want to say hello to, but the American Legion has sponsored Boys and Girls State in all fifty states. What Boys and Girls State are, are leadership conferences for students that are after their eleventh grade year, that are going to be in positions of leadership in their school or maybe their community. They bring students together from all over whichever state they're from and have them emulate an actual state and local government, starting with the city, the county, and then the state. They actually meet in rooms like this at the state legislature, they actually campaign, they run for office, they run all the way from city council, which is what I was when I went to Boys State so many years ago, all the way up to governor. And we've had several governors from Marion County in the past ten years at Boys and Girls State. But, it really brings together the future leaders of the United States and especially in Florida. Well, what Alana has actually done is she attended Girls State as a representative of Danellin's American Legion Auxiliary, but she took it up a notch this summer. She was attended, she was one of three hundred girls at Girls State, and she was chosen as one of Florida's two representatives to Girls Nation. That's where ninety-eight of the top leader, female leaders, eleventh grade going into twelfth grade, actually meet in Washington DC and emulate the national government. Hawaii doesn't participate, but the other forty-nine states each only send two students to do that. That's the first time that I know of in the years I've lived in Marion County that we've had someone actually attend Girls Nation. It's a very great honor, and Alana represented us very well. Now, I'm going to step aside and let her tell about what she actually did at Girls Nation.
Thank you. Before I start, I would like to first of all thank all of you for inviting me to come and speak at this meeting. I would like to thank Ms. Ellie and the American Legion Auxiliary for their support that they've shown me, and also to my parents for supporting me through all of my endeavors. At Girls State, I was a lobbyist, so I was outside of the House and Senate. I did not sit on the floor, but I actually got to meet and talk to thirteen different political figures that either worked in or very closely with the Capitol on a daily basis. I met different lobbyists, I met different senators, representatives, and tons of people who had a great influence on my life. Well, I really didn't know exactly what I wanted to do before I went to Girls State, and then I thought, "Well, I'll be a lobbyist." So, then I was nominated for something called Honors Interviews, where another panel of women from the American Legion Auxiliary interviewed twelve different girls, and of those twelve different girls, only two were chosen to be national representatives at Girls Nation. Now, after I went to Girls Nation, when we got there, our first day, we went to Arlington National Cemetery. I'd been there before in eighth grade, however, as a senior, this gave me a completely different perspective. When I was in eighth grade, I exchanged Sarith at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier in name of my cousin, Specialist Osborne, who had recently been killed in Afghanistan. Now, the American Legion Auxiliary celebrates what veterans have done for us, and it reinstilled my thanks to our veterans, to our police force, and to our firemen. We also went to the National Holocaust Memorial Museum, where we met a Holocaust survivor who spent about three hours with us telling us about her testimony. We went to Walter Reed National Memorial Hospital, which was a hospital for veterans who had recently come out of warlike situations that couldn't quite filter back into regular civilian life. And I was expecting to see all men with gray hair, but they were only about two years older than me. So, they were from ages eighteen to twenty-five, and we got to sit down with them, talk to them about things like where they're from and what their favorite sports team is. We didn't talk to them about what it was like back when they were getting shot at in Iraq and Afghanistan. We also held Senate, where my bill actually passed through our Girls Nation Senate, and my bill was a joint bill between four other states, which had also never happened in Girls Nation history. And it was basically saying that foods that contain GMOs have to be labeled, and it was just for, to promote health consciousness, and it was very exciting when we saw the President of Girls Nation sign that bill. Now, the most exciting thing that we got to do was go into the White House, and we got to meet President Obama, which was awesome, he's quite a character, and he made us joke, or he made us laugh, and we sang "Happy Birthday" to him. And after I came home from Girls Nation, which completely changed my perspective of how I dealt with my everyday life, I had to make a presentation at the local American Legion and American Legion Auxiliary, Post 58 in Danellin, where after I was done basically recounting my experience, like I just did to you all, I had multiple people come up to me after I said that I wanted to be a lobbyist, and they said, "A lobbyist isn't good enough for you, you're going to be president one day," you know, going on. And little did I know that a man who had come up to me, he said that same thing, he says, "A lobbyist isn't good enough for you, here's my contact info, let me know when you want to run your campaign." And I was like, "My campaign?" And this was Florida State Representative Dennis Baxley. And since then, that next week, I've been an intern working on his Senate campaign for 2016. I've been going on to events with him, and I've also been working on the administrative side, and I also worked on Rick Scott's campaign here at the Ocala Victory Center. So, since then, I have turned this around from going to a citizen who was slightly involved to a citizen who, even though I can't vote, I'm very politically active, I've become the President of the Politics Club at CF, where we engage in, you know, civic activities, civic awareness, we want people to stand for something and know what's going on around them, because our youth are our future leaders. So, as I conclude, I just want to, again, thank you all, and if you have any questions, I would love to answer them.
Board, any questions?
I think you need to work for us.
We're just honored to have you in Marion County. What kind of accolades you receive, that's great.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Did you take a lot of pictures when you were in DC?
I did, yes. Unfortunately, when we were in the White House, we weren't allowed to take pictures, which of course is understandable, however, I got to take tons of picture in the Capitol and the United States House and Senate chambers in front of our Capitol Building. We, as Girls Nation Senators, of course, had to sing everywhere we went, so we have a ton of pictures of us singing in front of the Lincoln Memorial, singing at the World War II Memorial, going around, and I've had many family members who are veterans of our military, so being able to go to all of those monuments was a very big deal.
That's great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Osborne, you need to be commended.
Oh, thank you.
I just want to know, do you know your school song?
My alma mater for Danellin High School?
Right.
I do, but it just, I don't know if you guys really want to hear me sing that. Not exactly.
I just wanted to make sure you stay grounded. I just wanted to make sure you stay grounded.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mark Villanello, Executive Director of Student Services, is here to honor and recognize the contributions of Student Services professionals for Student Services Week, February 2nd through the 6th. Mr. Villanello.
All I can say is, wow, Alana, whose bright idea was it to put me on after her? Good evening, Mr. Tomlin and Madam Chair and Board Members. Did you know that next week, February 2nd through February 6th, the state of Florida has recognized to be Student Services Week throughout the state? And what I would like to do, which is not practical, I would love to be able to, our department is very large, we have about two hundred and sixty people, I would love to be able to bring each and every one in front of the board and pat them on the back for a job well done. However, in their stead, we have some superstars out there in the audience, and I would like to spend a moment and recognize the chairs or the directors and supervisors of our departments that make up the larger Department of Student Services. So, in no particular order, let's see, I will start to my left, and if I ask you to stand, Barb Dobbins, Ms. Dobbins, is our Director of Exceptional Student Education. A round of applause to Mr. Dobbins. Mr. Lane is so good, he has two departments. He is the Director of Psychological Services and Social Work Services, Mr. Matt Lane. Dr. Dama Absher is our Supervisor of Alternative Programs, which is all of our contracted sites and our DJJ sites, Dr. Absher. And last but certainly not least, is the Director of Guidance and Testing, Mrs. Janet Weldon. And Mrs. Weldon was telling me she's worked in that department for twenty years now, and this is probably one of your most challenging years, I would have to say, and you are guiding the district very well, Mrs. Guidance, Mrs. Weldon. So, thank you for your service and all of our services for what you do for the district. So, if the backbone of education is the teacher-student relationship, you can find student services employees behind the scenes, working to support that relationship, often right there on the front lines, with teachers, with students, providing guidance to families to help our district reach our vision and our mission statement. I'd like to read something very quickly. It came from our state project, the State Student Services Project, and here's what they wrote. "Student Services Week is coming soon. We look forward to celebrating your incredible contributions during the week of February 2nd through February 6th, 2015. As school counselors, school nurses, school psychologists, school social workers, ESE staff, and alternative program staff, you dedicate your efforts to supporting the academic staff, and alternative program staff, you dedicate your efforts to supporting the academic, behavioral, social, physical, mental, and emotional development of all students. Students and families are safer, healthier, happier, more supported, and ready to learn because of your expertise and persistence as individual professionals. Furthermore, you maximize your impact by working together to deliver coordinated and integrated services within a multi-tiered system of supports. Please accept our gratitude and admiration for your work." And Mr. Superintendent and Board, I would like to tell you that I'm awfully proud of our department. They do good work here, supportive work, the important work for, for our district. And so, when you see any Student Services professional next week, please be sure to give them a pat on the back and an ad-avoid because they are very deserving.
Ms. Sealy?
Not, not just give them a pat on the, next week, but all year long. They work so very hard in our schools and I, I don't know what, what our staff could do without them. The school counselors, they have, they wear many hats, where they used to just have one, that was counseling, but now it's... And our school nurses, social workers, and psychologists, we just couldn't survive without them, but thank you and I hope that we say thank you all year long to them.
Thank you.
Mr. Villanello, you know, I interact with your department a lot and I really respect that, your department and I appreciate that and no one really knows just how much work they, they're, much time they put into it, but, but you can tell that it gives two, I mean, I would say so much over, over, Mr. Superintendent, and I respect and I appreciate all, all the work they do and thank you too.
Thank you, Ms. Boynton. We do have a great team and our great team connects with other great teams such as K-12 Academics and other departments and other schools and really work in collaboration, in collaboration, to provide that great school system that we have.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt a proclamation recognized in February, February as Black History Month? Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Mrs. Ely and Mr. James. Do we have any discussion? I call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes for a zero. Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Productions Coordinator, along with Dr. Anna DeWes, Director of Federal Programs and Grants, please come forward for the reading and presentation of the proclamation.
Let me read this proclamation. It reads, "Whereas Black History Month shares the historical and present contributions of African-Americans, whereas Black History Month began as Negro History Week in February nineteen-twenty-six in the United States as a supplement to the school curriculum through the work of African-American scholar Dr. Carter G. Woodson, his aim was to encourage a greater awareness and understanding of the African experience and contributions in America, Africa, and throughout the world. Whereas later in the nineteen-sixties, the week expanded into Black History Month to commemorate a more balanced and accurate picture of Black history and is celebrated during the entire month of February as it coincides with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass, which is February fifteenth, and Abraham Lincoln on February twelfth. Whereas throughout Black History Month, we celebrate the many contributions African-Americans have made to our nation and we are reminded of their courage and struggle to change the hearts and minds of our citizens. While much progress has been made, we must continue to work together to achieve the promise and vision of our great nation. And whereas the School Board of Marion County recognizing its own diversity and that of its employed workforce and entire student body, will continue to honor Black History Month to enhance equity and diversity. Now therefore, the School Board of Marion County, Florida proclaims February as Black History Month and it's dated this evening and signed by each of you." So, Dr. DeWes, on behalf of the Board and Superintendent, I'll present that to you. Thank you and you're welcome to say some words.
And I was back there trying to figure out what could I say that could stick to people in TV land and so, I came up with something short and sweet. We have to remember where we've been, so we know where we're going. So, on behalf of all of the employees of Marion County and the students of Marion County, I accept this proclamation. You guys have a great evening.
Just a moment, Dr. DeWes and Mr. James?
One of the things I think we need to mention is on February the twenty-eighth, we have the Black History in, introduction of the, of the African-Americans in Marion County.
At Howard Academy.
At Howard Academy. And I would like to encourage every Board Member, if you have not visited or gone through that museum, you really should, because history is not afar. History is here at home. Just some of the people that will be going in this time is Elsie Stevenson, one of the pioneers in terms of farm, farming. Mark Hart III, one of the first African-Americans to really have a, be principal of a private school, the old Matthew Cypiel School, most people don't know where that is. Melvin James will be going in. He was the last trainer of a Triple Crown winner in the United States, so he will be going in. He trained and broke a firm, so he will be going in. And Sam Stevenson, one of the first African-American policemen, will be going in as well. If you have not had an opportunity to go in and look at all the people that grace those walls, you will find some really people, some people that you know.
And you forgot to mention that you were inducted last year as long, as well as Ms. Boynton.
Thank you. So, if you wanna see what we did, you need to go over there. That was one of my first schools that I attended when I was in, in Marion County. So, African, uh, history is alive and well. Thank you.
Dismissed?
That's dismissed.
Thank you. Individuals who completed the appropriate form prior to five forty PM would now have the opportunity to address the Board. Before you begin your presentation, it is required that you state your name and address for the record. Additionally, please spell your last name. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents wishing to address the Board regarding a discipline matter will have the opportunity to do so at that time. I will now ask the School Board's Attorney to explain some additional points.
Thank you, Ms. Boynton. If you do plan to address the School Board tonight, you need to be aware of the new procedures the School Board has adopted. A copy is available to you from Mr. Christian at one of the front tables. Audiovisual presentations are permitted if provided at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting to the School Board's Assistant. Audiovisual presentations are limited to a total of five minutes. The use of any student's name except by his or her parent or guardian or identifying references to or identification of other students and their families is strictly prohibited. Based on time considerations, the School Board by majority vote may rightfully limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten the presentation time, move public comment time to a different position on the agenda, or eliminate the public comment time altogether. Ms. Boynton?
Thank you. Ms. Blockhead?
Mr. Ed Watson?
Ed Wilson, sixty-nine, sixty, southwest one-hundred-and-fifty-fifth Street, Dunellen, W-I-L-S-O-N. And I'm not nearly as comfortable a public speaker as those young folks were and I'm glad Mr. Villanello already broke ice. So, I have my notes again. At the last meeting, I asked you to please investigate why we did not meet the Classroom Size Amendment and how the eighteen-and-a-half million dollar additional revenue this year over last year is being spent. To report your findings to the citizens of Marion County in an honest and thorough manner and to hold the people or person responsible for these violations of the public trust and Florida Constitution accountable, I am wondering if any progress is being made to make such a report to us. On a positive note, the Marion County School Board passed the strongest anti-high-stakes testing resolution in the state to date. You had the courage to include the parental opt-out verbiage. Thank you very much. We appreciate that very much. And I hope you are working to reduce the number of the tests required by the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I will say, we did, we, we will be having a workshop and the information will be coming out on our class size and all the things that you referenced too and I will try to make sure you get notice when we have our workshop.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Blockhead?
Ms. I'll have.
Board, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the correction to item C-thirteen, hearing date March tenth? May I have a motion?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. Ely. Any discussion? I call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes for zero. May I have a motion to approve the following donations? One thousand two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and nineteen cents to Dunellen Elementary School from the Dunellen Elementary PTO. Two basketball scoreboards valued at six thousand dollars to Dunellen High School from Sports Image Incorporated. Two thousand dollars to Forest High School from Lockheed Martin. One thousand dollars to Forest High School from the Tower Hill Insurance Group LLC. One thousand six-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and thirty-five cents to Greenway Elementary from Greenway Elementary PTO. Seven thousand five-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars to Lakewell Middle School from the Boy Scout Troop one thirteen. One thousand and seventy dollars and ninety-six cents to Ocala Springs Elementary School from General Mills Box Tops for Education. One thousand dollars to Westport High School from the Westport FFA Alumni. May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. King and seconded by Mr. James. Do we have any discussion?
No.
Okay. I'll call for the...
Excellent donation, twenty-one thousand dollars.
May I call for the vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And Mrs. Ely, would you think, would you think our donors tonight were...
Sure, sorry I spoke out of turn here. It's just great to see our community supporting our schools and giving the, the scoreboards. Wow, that's a lot of, that's a lot of money in those scoreboards. I also wanted to point out the, the Box Tops for Education at Ocala Springs Elementary. Every school has a Box Tops for Education box in the front office and families, parents, grandparents, if you're eating those cereals, there's a box top on top and you will, you know, you just drop it off at a school and the school does get money for those, all those box tops, but Ocala Springs did an outstanding job. And Lakewehr Middle School from Boy Scout Troop a hundred and, Boy Scout Troop one-one-three, seventy-five hundred dollars and seventy-five, seven thousand five-hundred-twenty-five dollars to Lakewehr. That's amazing.
Are you out here tonight?
Yes, wow. How did you all raise that kinda money? Yeah, yeah. That's amazing. Wow.
Yes, thank you for having me. We started the project back in, the end of May and we started the fundraising a couple months ago and we had a couple of donors from Lakewehr Middle Schools through Electronics Day and different fundraisers and then the majority of our donations was through Saint Timothy's Catholic Church and the villages and that's where my family and I have been parishioners at since I was a young child and they've been able to raise the majority of that money and we have gained an additional seven thousand dollars and we're over fourteen thousand dollars for our total and the other seven thousand playing ongoing to Lakewehr Middle School as well.
Well, they are so appreciative and we are too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr., hold on, Mr. James?
Well, I wanted to know his name.
Can you say that out loud for us again?
Daniel Kutz.
Daniel Cooks.
Daniel, are you working on, on the Eagle Scouts project now?
Yes, sir.
Is it permissible for him to discuss it?
Oh, yes, sir. We're installing a fit, fitness trail alongside the edge of Lakewehr Middle School where the students and staff are able to exercise through the physical ed, education and after-school for the staff.
But who do you have with you?
Oh, this is my mother, Laura Kutz, and my Scout Master Bud Boyer of Troop one thirteen.
Well, would you come up for a minute, just for a minute, please? He's an interesting man and I would just like for him to talk a few minutes about the Eagle Scouts because this is, this is some of the things I was sitting out there with him and he was telling, enlightening me on all of the, all the little details.
Thank you, Mr. James and, and Board Members and Superintendent. The Superintendent is an Eagle Scout, did you all know that?
I did.
Yes. Our small troop has been in existence for seventeen, for seventy-three years in Wearsdale and I've been with it for sixty-three years. And we've had about sixty-two Boy Scouts make Eagle, about forty-five during my tenure as Scout Master. And if a boy makes Eagle in our troop, we pay his college tuition. So, we have at the moment twelve boys going to college and we give somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars in scholarships. We have one boy at the Air Force Academy and he's on the dean's list. We have three boys at the University of Florida. One is in chemical engineering, making a four-point average. He's even come out with a patent for an invention and hasn't even graduated yet. Another boy's making three-point-eight in civil, in civil engineering. And we've got boys going to CF and the University of South Florida, but they're all doing well and we're very proud of all of them. We have a big, I'm gonna give, do an ad, if you don't mind. We, we have our annual spaghetti dinner on February the eighth and out in the middle of nowhere, we sell four thousand tickets to eat spaghetti. Usually only twenty-six-hundred of those people come to eat, the rest are donations. And the Superintendent comes and helps us serve bread at times and does come to our Eagle Scout ceremonies, which is quite an encouragement. And also, the Board Members give a proclamation to each boy that makes Eagle if it's requested. And I want you to know that that is, is very much appreciated when we're recognizing the good works of, of young men. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you tell them where that spaghetti dinner is gonna be?
Wearsdale Presbyterian Church and they've been our sponsor for the seventy-three years.
And you have another member of your troop you wanna just introduce?
I think this young man is from Presbyterian Church here in Ocala, seventy-two, Sandy Clardy's troop, yes. Thank you very much and we appreciate it. Daniel has worked very hard and, and I think we'll have about three Eagle Scouts this time. You have a brochure you wanna pass out?
I have a brochure in case you're interested.
Thank you, thank you for the honor of being able to, thank you and for your donation in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I have an extra one for Stacy? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Board, I have some meeting reminders. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, February the fifth, two thousand and fifteen, at nine AM. The purpose of the work session is to receive a mid-year report from the Superintendent and updates on the DESF contract, construction projects, and code of student conduct for two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, as well as continued discussion on the Milit, Milit Oversight Committee. At this time, does any Board Member have any comment? I'll start with you, Mr. James.
Yes, some things. Ms. Jenkins has, has left the building, but we have been really discussing the vocation alone. I look for Marion County and I wanna commend everybody that's out there really getting the community involved with that project as well. And I know that we are getting ready to really look at our staffing plan and one of the things that I would like to encourage us to do is make sure the data drive our staffing plan and as we can get the data to, that we have, that are coming out of our schools, I think it should be an intricate part of what we do. I think it should be an intricate part of what we do in term of determining where we use our resources and things of that nature. So we should be looking forward to doing that. One of the things I would like to encourage board members to please go through MTI and CTAE and look at what we are doing in reference to vocational training, per se, ourselves. Because if you have not had an opportunity to tour those facilities, you're doing, doing, I say, this service by not being informed on those things, because we are doing some things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James, Mrs. King.
Well, I've just been making my rounds, you know, becoming familiar with our county, and I've had the opportunity to visit Anthony Elementary, and I saw some really good things happening, like the cake and strategies, strategies. And I believe that when I walked into those classrooms, every student was on task, which, being a teacher, you know, it was obvious, and it was really great to see that. And also, I had the opportunity to visit North Marion Middle, and I visited the cafeteria during the morning, and I was amazed at the middle schoolers that could actually, they had inside voices, carry on good conversations, and it was pleasing to see that. And that's what I had to say today.
Thank you. Mrs. Ely?
Okay, as usual, I have an infomercial about something really good happening. Reading Pals is sponsored, it's part of the United Way program in Marion County. And I want to give you some statistics. I'm a volunteer for United Way Reading Pals. This started in two thousand twelve. It's all a grant, provides volunteers to read to kindergarten students in the academy programs. They selected fifteen schools to be part of this. Volunteers read to a student twice a week for thirty minutes, and after the second session, the child takes the book home. Since its inception, excuse me, eight thousand books have been given to students for their personal library, and this was all donations, all grants. Through this program, over four hundred families now have new books in their home. And by the end of a year, each child will have between twenty-five and thirty books in his home. This school year, two thousand six hundred and fifty-two books have been given to students. Currently, there are two hundred and twelve children reaping the benefits of the dedication of two hundred and five volunteers. During the first four months of the program, this school year, volunteers provided four thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight hours of service. If the school system paid a reading coach based on the Marion County School pay schedule, it would have cost eighty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And I further want to brag on how well our academies are doing with all the additional volunteer help that they're getting. Last year, the fifteen kindergarten academies scored eighteen percent higher on their end-of-the-year assessments than the regular kindergartens in Marion County. So parents, grandparents, if you know anybody who has some time that they could give to a school, please have them contact United Way and get in touch with Reading Pals. It's just the best program ever, and to see a child go from the beginning of the year when they can hardly write their name to the end of the year when they're reading a book is just amazing. That's where the learning really starts in our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Boynton, and board members, I'm getting a little tired of y'all stealing all my thunder. With an executive secretary on my left and an attorney on my right, please note that the first thing that I was going to do was announce that Daniel Cutz is here tonight, visiting with us, and that his scout master Bud Boyer and his mother Laura Cutz, who happens to be an employee of ours also, is here tonight. So since they've taken that thunder, I'll go two more steps farther and say that we also have two school administrators in our district that are very, very active in that particular troop. Brian Green, who's an assistant principal at Maplewood Elementary School, and Brent Carson, who is the Forest High School principal. Secondly, with an executive secretary on my left and an attorney on my right, I too would like to say a moment or two about our engagement education program that Judy Zanetti has already talked to, about, to you about tonight, and encourage you to attend that. Now for my own things that I can share with you. I have shared with you also that our elementary schools are also in the process of hiring part-time cafeteria monitors. You know, this is being funded through the food service program, and this enables school principals then to reassign the regular paraprofessionals back to work with children in where they are mostly needed. And that program is off to a good start and is reaping good benefits for us already. You also know that you gave me the authority to go ahead and hire some physical education paraprofessionals to assist teacher, PE teachers in our elementary schools as they deliver, deliver a very important PE program to our students, enabling teachers to stay back in their classroom and do the things that they would normally do beside covering physical education classes. Fifthly, last night, we had a very successful meeting at Horizon Academy of this parents who were interested in the redistricting of students from our overcrowded Dunellen Elementary School that would be attending Sunrise, Horizon, and Marion Oaks. And Mr. Burke did an outstanding job for us, representing you in that presentation last night. And then finally, tonight, we all know, we said this a million times, that the key to successful students is appropriate instruction. And the Marion County Public Schools, through an awful lot of hard work of our staff development office and our K-12 academic services, we offer a lot of professional development to our teachers. This Friday, January thirtieth, is an in-service day for teachers. At our elementary school, should you be interested in visiting, our elementary's teachers will be at Saddlewood Elementary, South Ocala Elementary, College Park, and Ward Highlands Elementary. Our middle school teachers will be at Fort King Middle School, and our high school teachers will be at Westport and MTI. If you are so inclined and have the time to visit, those in-service activities will be running all day on Friday, and I know our teachers will be gaining valuable insight there. Thank you, Ms. Boynton, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lake, do you have anything?
Well, with the superintendent on my left and the chairperson on my right, I'll say thank you. I don't have anything. I'll just shut tonight.
I do, Mr. Superintendent, have a couple of things in board. If you got your emails, there was a request from Florida State Senate, Florida State Representative Neil Comby. And what I did with it is, if you read it, I'll pass it over to the superintendent so that he can make sure that it gets to the right department. So I'll send you another one right now. Give that to Brenda, so she'll have one, would you?
Thank you.
Okay. And we did receive another one, it's about my voice grant, and I'm not sure if you heard about it, Mr. Superintendent, so I'm going to send you this information down to on that. These emails came out today, and I do have a copy for you, Brenda. Also, the board has been really, really working hard on this independent oversight committee. And if you saw today's paper in the classified ads, you will see that we are, we are advertising now for anyone to, would like to, for interested citizens to submit a letter of interest and a current resume with your contact information to Brenda Flockhader. So if you're interested in serving on the oversight committee, please follow the direction. It's also, Kevin also put it on the website for us. So if you are interested in the independent Citizens' Referendum Oversight Committee, this is for the referendum that passed in November, and attached to that was a section that we would have some, an oversight committee. So if you're interested, please visit our website or look at today's paper in the classified ads. Thank you. Also, board, there is, you will find in your mailbox a revised copy of the draft of the procedures for that, so that we can kind of move forward on it. So if you would take the time to read it, I'd appreciate it.
May I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Revised from?
Revised from the one that?
Mr. Tomlin and you each had one.
Right.
So you're merging it together?
We merged it together. It was merged together, and so you'll see, you'll be able to look at the changes. So, okay. So Brenda, put it in your mailboxes already. All right. And also, on, I had the opportunity, the pleasure, actually, of going to five different schools. And we, and on the Thursday, the twenty-ninth, at eleven-thirty at Hilton, we will be selecting the non-instructional employee of the year. And I had the opportunity to go to several of the schools where we were honoring the people, and they haven't been selected yet, so I don't know who won. But I just wanted to mention it and say it was a wonderful thing, and I will be at the luncheon at the Hilton, so.
And I will, too.
You will, too.
I will, too.
So we're all going to be there, because we really want to support our staff. Before closing, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through January the ninth, two thousand and fifteen. Are there any parents in the audience who would wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a discipline matter? There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
A second, please.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Ely and seconded by Mrs. Kelly. Any discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye, opposed, like sign. The motion passes, meeting is adjourned.